Would listen.
So I did a showing me I get another shot of my head.
No, I'm sorry. I was driving a car.
I'll see how long this one lasts. So stop before. Did I have surgery for my back?
I found.
Uh, blood's here. They're the trial slum floor simulator. Yeah. See if it works.
I just want to go in.
Doesn't work, we take it out every week. See if it works six weeks after. Sure. So. He said, um, what's the point of fixing anything?
I don't know if he would have this possible.
All electronic has to block the signal from there.
Well, let's go and get this one done so we can look on that. Advice.
It's where they're taking.
Care to see?
I'll go ahead and get a camera up there.
I'll go and call me in order. That's from the last meeting. I was, it was pretty short.
Discussion I must have been nothing really.
All favor. Anything, anything, we're good? Okay, I thought, I thought, okay, thank you. That should be easy enough now. He getting anything new from zoning admin or just any updates or any?
The view, uh, very obvious signs about this apartment got that all approved.
Okay.
Uh, Sharon Alexander approached me last week. Uh, he wants to put a apartment complex by the law courts that haven't had to be added, added each house. There's that empty lot outside it. Wants to try to put a four apartment building in there. Sure, it's not so for apartment status, have their special exemption or exemption. I told him that that's something that he wants to pursue, that he needs to get that building planned and everything together. And he'll have to schedule a little bit of a field though. But don't need to see anything.
But I would recommend, uh, talk to him, I reckon maybe he come to a regular meeting first. Explain what he wants to do to make sure everybody's on the same page.
So you're having BCA first.
So we need to go straight to a BCA or we can stay and come here and be like, hey.
Yeah, I just want, I want to make sure he had plans from an actual engineer and fit the site and everything else, you know?
All the requirements are the biggest thing. Make sure he fits all the requirements. I mean, if he goes through the tall, that trouble. And can, and is all, everything's on the up and up, then I mean, I don't. We would have any, as, as a town board, I don't think.
No, that ain't, no, it should come to us first.
Come to the plan commission, then we refer him to the BGA.
Yeah, if I don't like what the BGA says, he can come to the council. But usually by that point, it's.
Then the owners make it over a little easier.
Later, come to us for us to turn them down if it doesn't fit in that. And then they gotta move on from there. Yeah. Then he will appeal and, uh, uh, I don't know if we was to change that, if any of the neighbors would be notified that.
There is, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Boy, that would have to have a public meeting, just like it would have for the BCA so that they.
People in residential, wait a minute, it's next to, you know?
That may not work, you know?
For sure. But that's what the BCA meeting would be for. They'd get letters and they'd be notified. They could come in and talk and. I'll, you know, speak on the behalf of Mayor A, you know, Ford or against it, like I thought so.
He needs to come and put his hands in all that.
Okay.
Did he buy the place already?
Is that the house that Dave does then with the lot where Dave does then?
Small, small lot for that big of a place, that's for sure. I don't.
Okay.
Well, show some drawings and things.
Sure.
I think.
Right, yeah, I think you did right there.
I think Pammy said that. Her probably went right up to that other half. She said that at one time.
She said there was property line of speech with him or something. And she was talking about.
As JR knows, with setbacks and everything else, that could be even. It's even tighter, you know, it's even a tighter lot.
Cause that's what I told him, it's like. Sure, cause when you start throwing setbacks in. Yeah. I'm telling you, parking spots pretty.
Which we waved at before we did, I mean, we waved at for that. Those parts, Jimmy, there's not two for, for CWG.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, I think you guys approved. Angle end up being fifty, I, I don't know, I can't remember back then. Yeah, it wasn't, wasn't. Sounds like you're still.
Minimum of four car.
That's probably even still tight, I would think, yeah.
Probably that's.
And there's no way you're, no way.
That's gonna be where they're gonna park. The other cars, cause most people have two cars.
And there's no street parking over there obviously, so it's, yeah.
There's an alley behind it. I don't know, it's gonna be tough for it there.
I mean, they got engineers designing stuff related to, they make it. Oh, okay, gotcha.
There's a lot of, well, the parking garage.
That's kind of what you say. I got you.
Hopefully we'll see what he's got to say because of his plans. Anything else to know or is that? Okay, cool. Thanks, Kegan. Thank you.
I don't pay them. You're doing a nice job.
Yeah, you are. You did, you did good, especially with talking to the, the shale, the new guys that they, I noticed they got their stuff up like you, you told them to about their signage and they got it out quick and yeah, so you're, you're doing a job. Appreciate.
Is that show of new ownership, I guess?
That's what I had heard. I think Delkens has said that. It was the same owners, but they just remind.
Switch brands?
They've been still that family out of Ohio.
Joan sold it, right? The Joan sold it to us, okay.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't. Glad shortly. I need your J C points and.
I'm gonna, right, you're in?
Does look like, uh, Barnes is coming.
No, don't look like it. Not yet. Alright, I made my schedule.
Very good, anything good?
Yeah, one other thing, well, I thought you said you talked to him. But some cars over there, so what was it? He'd be one at a time or something till those three are gone or something?
Yeah, he said that he would just put one over a time to get those three gone and then I'd be it.
Okay.
I always got rid of one. First one, yeah, so we'll just see what happens.
Sounds like Dick compromise, get everybody happy.
I mean, yeah, it's no use, you know, over something like that.
No, no, that's what I thought.
You know, he, he can say I'm driving this car of work over here and I'm just parking it here, you know? I mean, we know it's live, but.
I'm trying to listen, it's good compromise.
Yeah, loophole, but yeah, I think it's, uh, it's not getting a big battle over that. That ain't worth it. Alright.
Good, Jerry?
All favor?
Thanks, Kegan. I can't approach that ham every day.
I don't, sometimes it's something, you know, it's only, it's only December sometimes.
His hand still on.
Open it up.
No, is she not in some other mode or what? A big one there in front of the, yeah, yeah, she's still, I, I, she probably.
Just notice that cause she normally stay on top.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Who's still?
Still not her, yes. I wasn't sure. Dick Higan, thank you. Yeah, we mentioned something.
I, I, as long as you go by it, I just think of it, yeah.
I know that too, but she, she got somebody else.
I heard that off, yeah, but we got an Irish who wants to show.
Oh, okay.
Got the fan here, he's gonna check it out, he's gonna get it.
Alright, thank you, ours. Yeah, maybe they have to go back here. Yeah. I'm just gonna wait and see if she go over there or not. So then she's gonna do these. I think there's seven, then he'll be, uh, I'm gonna need, you have it back a little bit. I don't, I don't want to put that out there. I was down. I could have flown to South America. I could have flown, that's how far I will. So, yeah.
Select a service or say that pops up in your face and look the local.
It's lying. That will have, he said there are cease and desist, but you know, that's a shit. If that's happened, then, you know.
That's where I would want her to come here, cause I, I just would be like, well, that's. Yeah, we're gonna, I'm gonna wow her up and call something. So. So you guys, so you don't see that.
She's. She, so what? That was fun. What was nice is.
So, yeah, he told me, he had this one. So he doesn't.
It's one of the big ones.
I don't think.
I don't have, Sam, I don't think. I can't excuse anybody.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna continue to be against it instead of, I don't know, I don't actually enforce them, I didn't make them.
As long as she said there's like four people, like separate body, amen, blood, and on your false declaration. I'm gonna start, I don't know, I just, I just. I'm gonna bring my son to get it, walk up in Spain, boy, you know? Hey, they got, they got, they got. I'll be up there too, Jerry. She would, yes, I mean, you know, she. He wanted it, so you have it, you know? So I'm, so I'm, so she's like, I want that, you got it. That's like what you're working for, is that what you got? I'm.
But we have, except for the Brent Street, you've got everything there.
Okay.
The A.
What's A?
I don't know.
Well, trying to get an accurate, you know, so we got a job right out. For, uh, preserve the historical aspect, plus modernize it, so. Salvage of that. Which, it cost us no money. It's time to do.
Oh, this song.
Okay. Uh, we're easy, if which is okay.
Yeah. Which would, I can tell.
Yeah, okay.
Diagram. And so I talked to everybody. All the, I go for this. Five years before.
We want that.
Now, I think I'm just. I think I just. Yes. They said. I know. Twenty-four something.
For the eleven thousand. That included.
Oh. That was. This was terrible, because what I paid right here was twenty-seven. So, but, I think. Yeah. Also. So, I, I think. Six with you.
Well, all of that, yeah.
So, I don't know. Is this a new, they don't live there? You know, so that's what we just paid.
So, we're gonna.
Uh, sure. So, there, then. I thought. But, that'd be fine. He's in. Just one more good. Um, yeah. I don't. She, you have a speed up a lot. I don't know. Boy. So. That sounds.
I don't know.
Got one. It's it. On the other way. But, me, the. I, this is. Why? Yo. I don't know. Uh. That's, you know, that's a good one. Yeah. I'm sending them back. And, well, yeah. But. What, what, yeah. Well, yeah. I'm losing my power. I'm not much. Morning time, though. I love it. I'm just. You have one job. Well. Uh. I feel we got. Guys, though. That's it. That's why. That's why. I need to get. Yeah. As, to my. It's, it's a moment of wisdom.
Okay. Yeah. All right, we'll get it together for you. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, I'm not. Well. You know, I mean, I'm. No, you know, just sort of. They don't really pack in.
You're fine. I'm hearing them out.
Yeah, temple, temple. You said. You change my. Yeah. I, I think they know. The whole, that they're bidding approved. That's how I do it. Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll just do it each.
Yeah, we just pay. Okay, twenty-seven, seven, seventy-five. Let's see, this was twenty-seven, one, fifty-five, and a six hundred and fifty dollars. For Sinclair, do you have that one?
Yeah.
I don't think. She doesn't. And I'm like, well. I mean, I don't know those. Something on either. Okay, well. But, and that was what happened.
But, first, it's.
But, it's behind there. It's all part of. That's the thing. Do you got? The walk on. Jason.
Places. No, and here, bless your heart. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and like I, that's what I was telling him at a meeting, I said, if I could just give me one.
Yeah, I mean, I know. Oh, they were trying to get the. It's like Friday, we're supposed to be.
My dad said they had, that I have on. Thousands of. To pay them, pay them, I gotta do it again, so.
Called me and told me it was. When I was on my. Now, I'm saying. Check off his.
Thank you.
I guess I do need to speak, yes, but yes, in their plea. A couple items.
That's good.
All right.
Tell me, you know.
Motion is spent with the reading of minutes.
I'll second.
I'll favor.
Uh.
Make the motion, except said minutes.
I'll second.
I'll favor.
Uh.
Well, there you.
Looks to. Hey, so when is that?
Just Friday.
Yeah. Even. To do people that. Seven, Friday.
And just remember that. Remember that. Me and you, I don't bet on, and Kevin, and Kevin, we're all, we're all, that all affect us. And Billy.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Iris.
Thanks, Iris, thank you.
The Irish? What?
A life's strong.
Oh.
I think it's just.
I'll see. I'll just. Uh, okay.
Yeah. I should add, I didn't take it, but he's got. We thought, I said, like five. If you're up there. And then at six o'clock. Well, I see myself moving. Yeah.
This one, why do you?
That's. John.
Or why?
Okay. You're.
Yes. Thank you, Iris.
Chief Campbell.
He's here. Was playing. So, I talked. Thing about it. I was talking. I expect that helicopter, that gets in there, man. So, more of that. So, what he said, it just worked four corners with my orange paint. Put a red one, so the little. Um, I bet that's something, honestly, I probably don't. That's something. Just. I'm down. Like, for a stencil. Not what we can stencil over here. The paint that. Hughes uses sometimes over at bunch of crosswalks and stuff. Part about it is that's a high. Always in. Uh-huh. It's the two of them. So, I think it's cheaper, more economical. Question it up. As we need to use just. Red paint that we.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, with Frank Slick, I do know he used two different types. And I was with him in a parking lot over there. And set one type of, of that stuff, it just basically stuck down, it wasn't the thermal blast. So, that's what was coming up over there in the parking lot across from your fire department.
I don't know, he used a firebox.
I'll ask him if that was the same thing, because. He said, well, I'm gonna come back over here and redo this whole parking lot. Now, the thermal blast is like in all of our entrance. Stop, you know, entrances where the blocks are, the stop blocks. That's the thermal blast, and I don't think he ever peeled that up any, Joey.
Sheer cheating.
No, it, it's been on there before, they put it on originally.
It just wore out over time.
Yeah, so. You know, we can do it however you want to do it, but.
Whatever, it's just, whatever works.
And I don't think he can get it in red, he said, so if you need it in red, then.
Yeah. That's kind of odd. That's just what. Yeah.
How it is.
Yeah. That's something, that's something. Easy for us.
Yeah.
So, that stencil down.
So, you guys wanna do that, and then.
The stop sign, you, you have to have the stop sign that goes in, right? Joe, I'm talking.
It's just. Pulled up. All the corner. And now. It's like way of them. Come back up. If they hit it.
Okay, excellent.
So, I think. Joe, I think you get that one.
And we have quite a few.
We live a lot, I think, because it's, it's convenient and safe. Um, just for the five. Six hundred and forty.
Six hundred and forty.
Outstanding.
Yes, and.
Glad we paying you, for sure.
Can you tell me how many in the. County, in, in the county, okay? Thank you. Thanks to the county and the towns, I like it.
Also, done. Still, we're not as fair, but it's not bad. It's about as awful.
Not, yeah. Good.
But, no, thanks, too. We did have some, uh, had some maintenance flips this year, we didn't expect.
Well, that's, it happens. Maintenance, unfortunately.
Improvise with that, you know. Anyway, thank you guys for all your support and stuff.
That one's a thing you do. All right, though.
Glad to have you.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Patch you someone back.
Yeah. Support. Support, I don't know.
You have something that we needed in this community.
Well, you've always got support in West Bay.
Thank you.
That means a lot.
Yes, thank you, I just have a few items for council this evening. I have reviewed invoice number two, five, seven, six, seven from USI Consultants, and in the total amount of twenty-seven thousand, a hundred and fifty-five dollars. It is sufficient to be approved by the council this evening, so I will need a motion to approve that.
Oh, I'll make that motion.
In a second.
I'll favor.
Uh.
We also have one omitted item, it is invoice number two, five, seven, oh, five from USI Consultants, it's in the invoice total of six hundred and twenty dollars. That is for the time period of June first, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. It is for West Bay Springs Sinclair Engineering Assessment. That is sufficient to also be approved by council upon motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I'll favor.
The only other item I have is pay application number four, uh, USI Consultants, it is in the. Twenty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents for Temple and Temple. And I believe that's already been paid, so I will just need a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say, yeah. I'll favor. All right.
I don't have any other items for council this evening, do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
Yeah.
She brought up Temple and Temple. Uh. They've got one manhole cover that got a change, I didn't like how we hit it. It was just right in the drive, you know? And they still got to stripe the, the areas and. Do a little more cleanup and.
I saw the checklist that they sent us, then.
Are, are they doing curb on the other side, too?
No. The water all sheets off.
Off to the creek.
And, uh, so. Something they have.
Okay, so what, what did you, were you saying you need a suit, what did you say?
No, I said Temple and Temples, they've still got to, uh. X-one manhole cover, that I just didn't like how. Laid in the road, it, it laid right with the road, but it made a, a hump. And they will have to cut it all out and redo it. And then there's some cleanup to do, some more dirt to add here and there, and striping, they gotta stripe it yet.
Look punch lift stuff.
Yeah, the punch lift stuff, and he's supposed to get that to us.
Well, then I'll do that before the weather gets.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they're, they're supposed to be started this week, and then. All the curb from our, uh, the sidewalk from our dump site all the way up past Goose's. We will have to run some kind of epoxy. We'll have to clean all that out. What was that rubber stuff, Dave, what is that foam stuff that they're gonna, they're gonna cut out, or? You know what I'm talking about? Where they.
Joint.
Yeah. Yeah, they're gonna cut that all down and epoxy all that down through there. Maybe it's just gonna look a lot better, so. They're still not done.
Adam, any word from FEMA?
Um, we've, I think we've submitted everything that we've been asked to submit, uh, we've signed everything and. Outed our I's and crossed all our Ts and gave them everything they've asked for, Goose has been on, her and I have been on most of the emails. We've supplied them with everything they have, they've asked, and.
Thanks today.
Yeah, thanks today, yes, we always.
Shooting those emails to Dave, saying, hey, we need this, and Dave has got, he got it to us promptly.
Yeah. So, as, as far as I know, we're just awaiting an announcement, when we, when we see our reimbursement for our seventy-five point five map, so.
Oh, oh, yeah, one more thing, I don't mean to cut you off.
That's all right.
Uh, Mike Hughes is probably not gonna get the final coat on the blacktop park this fall. He's, he's hoping to at least get the binder on the upper part. And he said, right now, the way the weather is. He wouldn't be afraid to pay you a road, but he said, if you want a nice slick finish on that, and it cools so fast, I guess, that. He just, he don't wanna do it, so.
Yeah, if he could just get binder down, it'd be great.
He's gonna get the binder down, and then next spring, I told him we need it first thing, since they opened the plant. You know, we need, be the first one that he comes in and finishes up, so. So, that's, we'll wrap with that.
See.
Okay, we need a, a spending plan for TIF. And Lynn's going to get it together, but my thoughts, we, we're using the TIF money for the park and. Is that what you wanna continue to do? And maybe even improvements on Boulevard, so that could encompass the, uh, decorations or whatever, if we end up getting something else done.
Slide that in or something, or did. Boy, I'll tell you what.
Billy, here you thought you'd kick that all that curb.
Yeah.
Full circle.
I think those terraces are hitting real hard. We might have to be out of calls for a while.
Yeah, I did. Ninety percent of Christmas decorations are made in China. That's what I don't know.
On this weekend. Have it in. Just in case. This is the back, so what do you guys say about the TIF spending? She's got a note.
Yeah. I'm, that's hard.
Everybody in agreement?
Park, Ruben.
And, oh, hard.
In hands. She's going in hands.
No, we'll just put Ruben.
Town Council President.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, I do not have an audit here, but, but there was like four people who came in and said the fall decorations look amazing. So, thanks, Joey, and all the light news. That's no lie.
Those were the four people.
The daylights out of me the first time I walked in here and he, and he started talking. Cause I didn't know he was over there, he did.
Liked it, everybody liked it. They got it chucked out. Okay, the next thing I have is a thank you letter from Aaron. Very nice, thank you. He sent us a thank you card. Very nice. Would you like to make it?
Yeah.
Thank you for your prayers, kindness, and support, it will always be remembered, Karen, Aaron, Tasha, and Tenley. Obviously, but. Very nice. Okay, the next thing is Gibson. Gibson, the letter that you guys have reviewed, and you've decided we will tell Smithville. We need a static IP. Or, or sticky IP. And for email, an IP number. So. What? So, is that okay to tell them this?
Yeah.
Right. All right. Um, that's all I have. Oh, I did give, um, Lynn, this merchants bonding company, it says that, um. You gotta say if the project is complete, acceptance date, final contract price, and everything, I think it would best come from JC or Lynn to make sure it's done correctly. Okay. And yes, I did sign this up with the open. I went ahead and do that, just in case we got bad money or whatever.
Seventeen dollars later. That's all in one place, right? We can allocate that for a Christmas fund.
You guys get Marcy's report. She just said, um, she would like. For, for weekends nights in order to close out all the twenty-two. Most box set files for twenty twenty-four and build twenty twenty-six, I think she'd need twenty-four five. And, um. Save your trash files and all that work to be completed by March, what was she doing?
Yeah, that's fine. We have to make a motion or anything, or. We have to make a motion, anything to that Lynn.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, just cover yourself.
You know, I'll make a motion to approve Marcy to work, any, any overtime hours needed up until March of twenty twenty-six.
I'll say it.
I'll favor.
Uh, actually, it's not. Open time. Or technically.
Okay, well, I guess, yeah. I should know that, you think.
Well, you don't know, right? All the guys have never got. Yeah, I know.
All right, that's all I have. My big nineteen page file over here.
But, do we get anything else?
Yeah, I got, uh. Kevin got our heater in up there for the splash pad for the unit, it's two thousand eight hundred sixty-five seventy-nine, and I looked at it today, and everything looks great. It's just what we needed, so. We'll make a motion to approve the payment on that.
I'll second.
I'll do.
Uh, and I've got. Hold here from Kevin on heating and air up there on the, uh, on the other building, I'm up on top, but I, I'm gonna do a little more checking on. Seeing what we can do with that building before we jump into that, maybe next month I'll have more for you on that.
The old shelter house up there.
Yeah, the old shelter house top of the hill and.
No insulation.
Yeah, there's no, we'll have to put in some kind of ceiling, or, so I'm gonna look at that, and then, uh. Region fifteen, we gotta make an appointment to that, and. Who was our appointment last?
I'm, just honest, I can almost never go, I know they're only quarterly, but they're six, seven o'clock on Tuesday nights, and with little kids, and. Mind that, I know that's not a good excuse, but it's, uh, it's just, it's hard for me to get. Well, I don't care to still be on it, but I just, I may not be. They attend very often, I know nobody.
I don't think.
And I think they're all in Ferdinand.
I don't think. Well, it benefits us too much anyway, is it?
We do need to make one appointment.
Yeah. I'm, I, I'll, I can do it again.
You also need to do that Orange County Economic Development.
Yeah.
Appointment.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause it's up, Johns is up in December, Skylar sent the email, so who do you want? John, you wanna keep it?
Well, Goose, I let you have it, so.
No, I, I done my time.
Do you want?
I can do it, yeah. I'll do it.
All right.
Okay, animal.
Motion point Adam to. This kind of economic development, yeah.
Development.
Development.
Partnership.
Partnership.
I'll say it. I'll favor.
All right. I'm not gonna make a motion.
Second to that.
Yep.
And Adam, you'll say. You can vote on yourself.
Okay, I didn't know how that, I didn't wanna.
Then I'm gonna put Adam, I'm making motion, Adam on the region fifteen.
Okay, Adam.
I'll second that.
What did you say?
Oh. Billy. I didn't want you back out, I don't know.
Adam would be a nay. You wanna, you wanna be.
The words didn't get off my lips, and Billy was second.
You have to step forward, we step back.
I figured since Adam's getting a free meal at Orange County Economic Development, then he needs something else to.
Yeah. So, for Adam.
Hey, I got somebody else that you're worried. Okay, gotta worry about that.
Thanks, Billy.
Thank you.
I gotta say, you know, being on there wasn't that bad, and, you know, you had a good meal, and.
Yeah.
It didn't last that long, so. No.
I'll, like, once a month, or.
Once a month, second Tuesday of each month.
Second Tuesday of the month.
Or during the day, or.
Yeah, noon.
At noon.
Okay. Noon, you'll be over at noon, you eat, and you listen, and. Go on. So, I, I've only.
It's not bad.
So, I've only got.
It's interesting.
I've only got two more meetings in.
Yes.
Not through your calendar.
Not that I'm counting.
I think I did it by touch of ears, I think you guys were wrong.
Well, yeah, but I got tired of you over there. Well, you got all our salt. Well, you got all our salt, right? And roll.
Sixteen grand. From the, uh, getting them service.
Oh, and another thing, Billy, I told Adam today, the splash, the dump bucket for the splash pad did not come in. It was a rebuild kit for the handicap swing.
Oh, good.
There's quite a few parts there for them guys to put it together, so.
So, I haven't paid, I, I'm not gonna pay until I, we get it.
No.
We have not received it.
We don't pay for nothing.
One thing just popped in my mind real quick as you're talking about the, uh, the playground equipment. Are we still doing the light, or are we doing lighting down there, or? I couldn't remember.
Yeah, we're still, we, yeah, we already bought it.
Okay.
Dave just bought a.
I know he's busy. I just, I forgot about it.
No, we still got, you're talking about the playground.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's over there at Joey's place, so. Hooks and lights, and. Whenever Dave gets.
Caught up, yeah, no, he's busy, busy man.
There's a grant too available for shading that he sent, uh, an email on, but you have to get a dermatologist to write a letter on behalf of it. So, we're, we're trying, but so far I've not got any.
Our dermatologist is a little quirky, so I don't know.
No, he's good, but he's.
He's good, but he's.
Moving buildings. I don't know if he'll do it. Does anybody else have a dermatologist that could write?
I've never been to a dermatologist. I would do that.
Skin is your largest organ on your body. That is important.
Maybe Joey's got a dermatologist. He's, I don't know.
Yeah. He's been licked when I soak it.
So, uh, that's something else I need to start looking at, or somebody, we gotta get some seating up there, order some shade. So.
And then David sent me. The building next to it.
David sent me, uh. Something from that one company your wife found, wasn't it, or something? And I went online, but I was having trouble getting. To their site, so I'm probably just gonna have to call them. And we'll see, and then I'll.
If they can give us some literature.
Yeah, and explain to them how ours is and see what they can come up with, so.
Yeah.
But we definitely gotta have that for next.
We get Dave's wife on it, they'll get that.
Yeah, I know that.
You'll find it. She will.
She wants to keep him working now the house as much as she can. I got you another job.
Have shade out before it opens up, you know? There's no place to sit, no place to get out.
And I tell you what, that.